Good afternoon. We'll call the special board meeting for Wednesday, May 28, 2025, to order at 4:04 PM. Roll call, please, Ms. Olson.
Director Carey?
Here.
Director Hayfley?
Here.
Director Jorgensen?
Here.
Director Mal Packham?
Here.
Director Nelson?
Here.
Director Ott? Here.
So we have six board members in attendance in person in the boardroom, and Director Jorgensen is joining us online today. Please join me as we observe a moment of silence. Director Nelson, can you please make the motion to adopt the agenda?
I move that the Board of Education adopt the agenda as presented.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Hayfley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Mal Packham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The agenda has been adopted as presented. We're going to have the Director of our Security, David Allison, who's going to, who's also retired military leaders in the Bureau of Allegiance today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your service as well. The next item on the agenda is superintendent's report. Superintendent Goll.
Good evening, Board. I think we've got some slides up here. I wanted to start with just a massive thank you to all our staff, all our family, all our students, all of the community that participated in this year's graduation. We did all graduations at Robeson Arena this year. Last year, we had a couple of our Opportunity Academies over at Wasn', but we've gone full in on Robeson, and it was a grand success. So I'm gonna, I think I was one slide too far forward. There we are. I'm a little off my timing there. Over five days, Robeson Arena was all District 11. I've been working with Downtown Partnership, and we hope next year to be able to introduce a series of discounts in our downtown corridor for our families that come down and celebrate. Nine o'clock event ends at 11:00, great time for lunch, and a three o'clock event ends at 5:00, great time for dinner. So what a great way for us to be able to come down. But thank you to everybody that participated in graduation. I think probably the most heartwarming experience for me is to see and to hear our student speakers of the events, as I heard of the students, each one of them completely demonstrated what we hope our graduate profile produces. None of them are off that message, even though they each have their own individual message. It's a great celebration of the work that everybody has committed to in District 11. I wanted to give a bit of a Jenkins update. This picture, it might look concerning to you all, but if you have seen the picture before, this is the crack that is now closed. So this is one of the walls. The progress of what's happening at Jenkins is moving very quickly. This is the media center wall in that hallway that went to the seventh and eighth grade educational space. And although you still see some gaps in there, that's just cosmetic at this point. They've lifted and leveled the wall. The crack is gone. I really appreciate the support of the Board of Education. I really have great thanks to our staff, to our families, and particularly our students who have been dislocated. I've bumped into many families that did eighth grade continuation ceremonies from Dougherty to now go and stay at Dougherty, and so we talked about how do we even bring those kids back to ribbon cuttings as we continue to celebrate the great things that are happening at Jenkins. Lots of demo happening in the rest of the building. I know several board members were able to walk the building, I think, last week, so just continue to communicate, we will be doing the same to share with people the great things that are happening at Jenkins. The only thing I want to do with my superintendent's report is, bear with me, I'm going to read the letter that I wrote that opens our budget book. I know most folks don't even know that we have an entire budget book, and they certainly might not know that there's a superintendent's message. What's that? Seventy-eight pages. Director Nelson, our treasurer, certainly knows that we have a budget book. But I just want to say emphatically how strongly I support this budget and how it is a budget that will reflect a direction that District 11 will continue on. And so I'll read this. I don't normally read. I usually speak more ad lib, but appreciate the team for putting this together. It is with great pride that I share with you the 2025-2026 budget for the Colorado Springs School District 11. Every page, seventy-eight pages, of this document reflects the core belief that drives our strategy. The number-one factor in student achievement is access to high-quality instruction. Nothing is more important to the future of our district, our city, or our country than the education of our children. That responsibility shapes every decision we make, and it is one we carry with humility and urgency. This year's budget continues to prioritize what matters most: compensation. Even as the state grapples with ongoing funding shortfalls, we are putting dollars closest to students. With a 10% raise across the board and higher recurring increases for roles that directly support instruction, we're continuing a multi-year trend of investing in our staff, especially our educators. Facilities: We are making overdue capital investments in our schools, beginning with Palmer High School and Jenkins Middle School. These projects are powerful examples of what fiscal stewardship can achieve even within known budget limits, and they pave the way for larger plans in the future. Learning that reflects the future. Teaching and learning in this country have remained largely unchanged for over a century, and too often, that stagnation has left students disengaged and underprepared. We are working to change that. This budget reflects a bold shift, investing in hands-on learning, student agency, and real-world opportunities that activate each student to become the agent of their own success. From paid apprenticeships to study abroad, from Rocket Day to the D11 Promise, we are aligning our resources to create meaningful, modern learning experiences that help every student discover their purpose and pursue their future. This budget also reflects a shift in how we work. With site-based budgeting, we are placing more decision-making power into the hands of those who know students best, our school leaders. We are holding ourselves accountable to the dollars our community entrusts us with, and we are aligning our portfolio of schools to meet the diverse needs and aspirations of our families. Thank you to the staff, the community, the Board of Education, for your commitment to this process, for their vision and support. Together, we remain focused on delivering excellence for all. With pride and a great purpose, your superintendent. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent Goll, for sharing that letter with the entire community. I know a lot of people don't get to read the budget book, so you sharing that in a public meeting, it gets the message out. Graduations: I do want to thank your entire team on a job well done. This is the second year we are doing the graduations at Robeson Arena. We learned from some of the challenges that we faced. The first year, I only heard positive feedback and accolades from parents who were there out there. So I saw Chief Nicole Otmer, Jessica Weiss and her team from Media Productions, David Allison and his team for all the security that they provided. So a big thank you for all that were involved in it, including the area superintendents. And the weather cooperated as well, unlike what it's going to be at the Air Force Academy graduations tomorrow. So thank you to your whole team. And the Jenkins, I was there ten days back, and that picture that you showed, that crack was still almost an inch apart, so a lot of progress has been made since I got to visit Jenkins. So it shows that we are moving really fast with intentionality and urgency. Okay, thank you. Board, do you have any comments on the superintendent's report? Okay, I don't see any at this point in time. We have a public hearing scheduled at 4:15 for the fiscal year budget?
You can go to public comments.
Yeah. Pub, okay. The public comments. Do you have, Ms. Olson, do you have any public comments at this point in time?
I do not.
Okay. We do not have any public comments, so, and we do have a public hearing for the fiscal year '25-'26 budget, and do we have any public comments on that budget?
We do have one.
One comment, okay. So that is scheduled to start at 4:15. We are at 4:14, so I will just go the protocols. You will have three minutes to the person that is, I'm going to call out your name. You will have three minutes for your public comment, and the item that you are going to address specifically is going to be regarding the budget. Please monitor the clock and ensure that your comment is going to be civil, professional, and courteous. And we are at 4:15, so Ms. Rebecca Asaveto can retire.
I'm a little hoarse because my allergy is so. Bear with me. Good evening, school board members, superintendent, and community. My name is Rebecca Kendredine, a teacher in District 11, and I'm here to address a critical issue impacting our students' education. This past year, I participated in the district's CKLA curriculum pilot, but I was unable to secure the materials needed to fully implement it for my ESL students. Despite my efforts, speaking to multiple staff members and trekking across district offices, I received no resolution, only vague responses and word salad. At one point, security even questioned what I was doing. This lack of support hindered my ability to deliver the curriculum effectively, toward changing my students' learning. Now I've learned through board docs that there's unspent money in last year's budget. Why then couldn't I access the resources my students needed? Will I receive the necessary supplies for the '25-'26 school year? I urge the board to investigate this disconnect, ensure accountability, and prioritize timely distribution of materials so our ESL students and all students can benefit from the curriculum as intended. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the end of the public hearing for public comments. I don't have any other person signed up for public comments. Moving on to the action agenda items on today's agenda. The first one is a contract award. Audubon Elementary School, new roof. Director Bankus, can you please make the motion for action item B1?
I move that the Board of Education approves Contract C 2025-1019 to Weathercraft Company of Colorado Springs for $1,149,130 and allowed an additional 10% cost increase for any approved contract modifications without further board contract approval. This project's performance period will begin May 29, 2025, and end July 31, 2025.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. This is new information. Superintendent Goll, I'll turn it over to you and your team. Chief Goll.
Good evening, Board of Education. Thank you, Superintendent Goll. I'll keep this very brief, but I would like to introduce some of the guests with us tonight. From Weathercraft, Mr. Matthew Woodworth. He is the project manager from Weathercraft. The contracting officer, Chris Sandoval. And from the capital program team, Jen Hoteling. And I know I'm going to goof this up. Dan Rongas?
Rongas.
All right. Woo-hoo. He is our D11 project manager. Thank you very much for coming. Tonight, this construction contract is for a complete roof replacement at Audubon. The existing roof was installed in 1996. And district-wide, we have about four other elementary roofs that have been installed within the last five years. We still have quite a few that need attention. This construction contract was competed and evaluated using our best value source selection procedures and evaluating technical approach and proposal, safety, schedule, capacity, and capabilities, past performance, and pricing. We received three responsive proposals, and Weathercraft received the highest technical scoring and was the lowest overall price. We have used Weathercraft for other projects within the district, which include Palmer, Bristol, and Grant. This project was put on hold for a short period of time while competing initiatives and was recently reinstated for contract award. If you approve tonight, work will begin tomorrow. Tomorrow. They are ready to rock and roll. If they start tomorrow, the completion date is July 31. This contract has all of our standard terms and conditions. It does have liquidated damages at a daily assessed rate of $500, and this four-ply built-up roof has a 20-year warranty. The total proposed project cost of $1,149,130 with that additional 10% allowance for any approved modifications without requiring further board approval. Potential unforeseen issues of similar projects may include the need for the roof drain replacements or sections of metal sheeting replacement once the existing roof is removed. This project is 100% small business, and at this time, I'll turn it over to the board for any questions they might have.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. Thank you for all of the people in the audience that have joined us today. Board, any questions? Director Hayfley?
You said, "fully completed" or "substantially completed"?
It'll be fully complete.
Okay. Thank you.
Brand-new roof for the start of the school year.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, roll call, please. Oh.
I was just going to make a comment that that roof was put into place when I was at school at Audubon. In '96, I would have been a student there.
So it's only six years old.
Yeah.
Roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Hayfley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Mal Packham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The I's have it, the contract for the roof at Audubon has been awarded to Weathercraft. Persuasive, and we look forward to a completed work in early August. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is approving the purchase of the four properties, four real estate properties located adjacent to Palmer High School. And this is, this resolution is delegating authority to negotiate and sign contracts to the chief operating officer. Director Carey, can you please make the motion for action item B2?
Yes, I move that the Board of Education approves Resolution 2025-45 to authorize Chris Odom, Chief Operations Officer, to enter into and sign the purchase agreements and all documents necessary to effectuate the acquisition of four real estate properties located at 219 East St. Brain Street, 221 East St. Brain Street, 430 North Weber Street, and 429 North Nevada Avenue, Colorado Springs, Colorado, 80903, for a not-to-exceed sum of $4,175,000.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. The Board reviewed this information related to this agenda item during executive session on April 30, 2025. Superintendent Goll, any additional information to the Board at this time? No. Okay. Discussion by the Board. Board, you have any comments or questions before roll call, please? Director Ott.
Thank you. A constituent reached out to me today with some concerns about the properties and their historic value. Could you address that for us? She specifically said they all four had historic, they were registered as historic locations, I believe, and so I wanted to just check in on that and what, if these are specifically to be torn down, or if we would resell the actual buildings. Thank you.
If I could, Dr. Weiss, to come up and address the historic question.
Sure. Absolutely. Thank you. The properties are located within the historic Wasatch-Weber neighborhood. The properties themselves have not been deemed part of the historic register, nor are they in the historic preservation overlay. However, we have had ample conversations with multiple historic societies. Just last week, I was on a Zoom call with representatives from the Old North End, from Patty Jewett, from Shucks Run neighborhood, listening and learning about the importance of these properties and what they mean to the neighborhood. And the commitment that we've made to them is to continue to have conversations about what are best options for preserving history within that space of the neighborhood. Without knowing exactly what is asked or needed just yet, it's hard to come up with an answer on, in the sense of, yes, they have historic value, yes, we want to listen, do we have a plan for, will they be torn down tomorrow? No, not yet. What we want to do is continue listening and talking. We have a presentation to the Historic Preservation Board on June 2 that we'll be talking with city planning about and continue to explore options. We've proposed things such as relocating the properties, incorporating historic attributes into our project, as well as what else we can do to elevate the historic nature of the current Palmer Building. So those are all considerations that are still on the table and conversations we'll be having going forward. Thank you.
You're good. Director Ott? Thank you. Thank you for that update, Dr. Weiss and Superintendent Goll. If, based on the conversations you have with the Historic Preservation Board, if that could come as an update to the Board in the March report? Thank you. If there is anything that the Board should be aware of. Any further questions from the Board on this topic? I don't see any other questions. And the funding for this is coming from the Capital Reserve? Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Hayfley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Mal Packham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The I's have it, the Board has approved Resolution 2025-45. The next item on the agenda is Resolution 2025-46, approval for the sale of real property and delegating authority to negotiate and sign a contract to the Chief Operations Officer, and this is related to the sale of Roosevelt Charter Academy building. Director Ott, can you please make the motion for action item B3?
Yes. I moved that the Board of Education approves Resolution 2025-46, granting authorization to Chris Odom, Chief Operations Officer, to execute and finalize the sale agreement for the property located at 205 Byron Drive, Colorado Springs, Colorado, 80910, transferring ownership to Roosevelt Charter Academy at a sale price of $8,150,000.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Again, the Board reviewed the information related to this agenda item during an executive session on January 15, 2025. Superintendent Goll, any additional information for the Board's consideration? Would you not? Okay. Board, any questions or discussions about this agenda item? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Hayfley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Mal Packham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The I's have it, the Resolution 2025-46 has been approved by the Board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the non-action item on the agenda. There are several budget-related items on the non-action item today, starting with use of a portion of beginning fund balance. All these are coming as non-action, and this, these items will go as action in next week's board meeting, regular board meeting. Superintendent Goll, I'll turn it over to you for the presentation of these items.
Dr. Comfort has a brief, but I do want to get on the record my great thanks and support and appreciation for Laura Heronick and the work that she's provided for the district. Laura is taking over the Chief Financial Officer position in District 8, and so although she's not here right now to be celebrated, we have done a luncheon for her already and just want to acknowledge the decades' worth of accounting that she has done to be able to allow us to present this year's budget as well. We are a better district for our time with Laura, and I appreciate her. Dr. Comfort.
Good evening, Board. I will echo Superintendent Goll's sentiments. Obviously, financial services will do the, does the majority of the work that you'll see tonight, and that's led by Laura Heronick, so we're very grateful to her time for the district. I invited her tonight, but she was afraid that you would give her too much credit, so she decided not to come. Melissa is pulling up some of the attachments that we'll go over. Some of these, until we get to the larger budget discussion, is funding. We carry large reserves. You'll see this on the sheet. Roughly $100 million or a little over $25%. And so this is us just clearly stating to the Board and the community what the planned use of those reserves are, and so you will see, obviously, our largest fund balance is what we call our contingency. That's our oh-no money that we save throughout the year, but then everything else is pretty connected to its specific use. And so you'll kind of see, not only do we carry general fund balances, but we carry fund balances for a variety of other programs: risk management, preschool, food services, capital programs, CARRIES their own contingency, MLO carries the fund balance. So when you add all of that up, we carry a lot of fund balance. So that's why we do feel comfortable being pretty aggressive with our budget, because we have lots of safety net money now. If that gets in jeopardy in the future, we'll have to evaluate that, but we carry a lot of reserves. And so this first resolution is just kind of signifying that we are aware of those reserves and where they go.
Do you want us to present all the resolutions? And then we can have a conversation?
Yep. Sounds good. So this would be then two, three, four, five. All of those are budget-related items. If you can present all of those together, and then I can open it up.
Yep. The second one that Ms. Olson is bringing up is a continuation of the first one, but this is our restricted fund balance. And so we do have mandatory set-asides that we cannot decide not to do, and so you'll see those listed here: Tabor reserves, we carry an encumbrance reserve for contracts. You'll see this instruction and non-instructional carryover, as the Board is aware. Our schools' instructional and non-instructional accounts carry over year to year, as do very specific departments. And then there's a few of other things there that you kind of see, but this is, these are restricted fund balances, so these cannot be used for anything other than the listed This is the Board authorizing inner fund borrowing. So what this means is, you'll see two departments listed here: basically our grants department and production printing. We do have a time where we received a grant award letter, but we haven't yet received the money, and so instead of delaying the implementation of a grant program, we allow the grant, Grants Office, to borrow from the general fund, and then it gets repaid. The same thing happens with production printing. They have some pretty heavy startup costs that sometimes we need to loan them some money, they pay us back. We used to have other departments. Food Nutrition Services used to be on here, preschool used to be on here, but because they're now carrying such large fund balances themselves, they can be borrowing be borrowing from their own fund balance and don't need to come to the general fund. And so this is the board authorizing, if needed, the general fund to loan grants and production printing until they receive their revenue to pay us back. Okay. Now we're going to talk about the, the big budget. As Superintendent Goll stated, very proud of the, there's one number I'm going to be really excited to share, and it's going to seem like a not exciting number, but I'm really excited about it. But before I get started, as with tradition, I do want to invite our DAC Budget Subcommittee Chair, Mr. Carl Schuler, up. He's going to kind of give his words about our budget and our IBR process, and then I'll step back in and go through my presentation and then answer any questions on any of the items we presented.
Hello, Board of Education. Carl Schuler, Chair of the Budget Subcommittee for this past year. I've got a couple of comments that'll be a little off-script because there is no script. First thing I wanted to do was indicate that I was a bridge, essentially, between Amanda Huber, who was the chair last year, had a lot of commitments, and the person we are now recommending for the chair next year, which is Rachel Johnson, who comes with a lot of credibility, a lot of chops in terms of her, her experience. So again, appreciate the opportunity to be the chair once again for just a year. Wanted to quickly thank a few folks, starting with Director Nelson, who sat over there at pretty much every one of our meetings and listened to us. Every once in a while, she would raise her hand and she would clarify her position or clarify the board's position, which was very helpful. Dr. Comfort was also a big help to our committee, very responsive to us. We started with the mandate that we not overtax the, most of the staff of D11, and he helped us bridge that. He was often the only person there from the staff, at least for the full committee meeting. Did a very good job of translating information to us, so the rest of the staff didn't necessarily have to be there for the whole meeting. You have our report. It's part of the voluminous and comprehensive report that Marion Klassen gave you, so I won't go into that in detail. We did look at the mid-year budget modifications. We looked at the assumptions that went into the budget. Almost invariably, we did a lot of critiquing, questioning, commenting, but ended up oftentimes, almost invariably, on the same page as the administration in terms of what was being recommended. There were a lot of thumbs up at the end of the day on what we did. Vicky McLaughlin was our vice chair. Really appreciate her help, including putting together the report. And Daniella Cade, her listening to me, all the various comments I made on the side, on the agenda, on the minutes, that sort of thing, was very helpful. Again, that bridging piece, we're looking forward really to having a parent member as the chair, hopefully next year going forward. I've always said, said it again and again, that you, that perspective of have, being an active parent is, you just can't replace it. Coincidentally, I just got back yesterday from our youngest daughter's graduation with tons of academic honors from a college back east, and that foundation was laid here, and I learned a lot from her as I was her active parent, but it's different now. Again, we worked on the mid-year modifications. We looked at the preliminary budget assumptions. We focus more, I think, than we have in the past on compensation, even though that's a challenging timing issue, policy issue for the board, but we, it is the number-one budgetary function and, at this point, priority of the district. So we appreciate the opportunity to be, to participate in that. We also looked at the site-based budgeting process, had a very good task force process that we followed from. That is something that will be important going forward and will shift more to the SAC level, because again, with site-based budgeting, school-based budgeting, there's a lot more higher-dollar decisions that will be made, prioritizations done at the school level. Going forward, involvement in proposed bond issue, which presumably will go forward, is something that we believe is important, continuing to be aware of the, and participate in the site-based budgeting process. And then finally, I do want to have one statement that I wanted to make as an individual, and that is that we do a lot of work, and we appreciate the opportunity to do that, and I do think it's going to be challenging to fit all of that into a single evening, and I shared that with others, and I will share it with you now. Might be a bridge, using the term "bridge," a bridge too far for a pilot. But again, we appreciate the opportunity to serve as the Budget Committee. Like to thank all of our members, and again, ultimately, we landed in the same place as the administration with a lot of comments and questions on most of what you see in front of you right now. Any questions of me?
Let Mr., Dr. Comfort finish it, and then if you can just take a seat out there, and if the board has questions in the end, we can direct the questions to Dr. Comfort and/or you. Thank you so much. Go ahead, Doctor.
Yeah, do you want to acknowledge Mr. Schuler and his leadership of the DAC, as he, as he mentioned, a more intensive process this year with task forces and all kinds of things, but I think a really valuable process to make sure that they were influential in the budget that we bring to you today. Okay. Obviously, everything about our budget, proposed budget is built on assumptions. As you know, we really true-up the budget in the mid-year budget. Right now, we're making a lot of assumptions. So you'll see we're making assumptions on enrollment as well as funding. We are expecting a per-pupil funding amount next year of $11,546. I will guarantee that will adjust to some degree at mid-year. Most often, that goes up a few dollars, which is always better for us. And then you'll see total program, and then also total program as a percent of all general fund revenue. When we look at our resources available, I just talked to you about those fund balances, so just north of $100 million in fund balances. Then you'll see the revenue from our School Finance Act, called our Total Program, transfers in and transfers out from the MLO, as well as we do transfer out money to charters, as you could imagine, because they get their per-pupil, as well as their fair share of MLO funding. And so you'll see there, our net general fund resources available is north of $400 million. It's a lot of money. And then you'll see our uses and resources, school-based expenditures at $287 million, and then you'll, you'll see kind of the remainder there. What I, well, first of all, this is our graph on where we're getting our funding. This is always a question from our tax base. And so what you'll see is, when you include our MLOs, we are basically a 50-50 funded system. Our community gives us half, and the state backfills just, just under half. That is a variable that differs district to district. What I would say is, because of our MLO, our community is substantially supporting our school district, and so we want to make sure we're using those resources as effectively as possible. Okay, here's the number I'm really excited about. You've seen this graph every year. What I want to draw your attention to is that instruction at 59.9%, okay? Last, not last year, two years ago, we were at 57%. I know that seems small, to go from 57 to 59.9. You've got to remember, every single percent represents 1% of $353 million. So when we talk about the reduction in central office spending over two years, you'll see we have shifted the needle on spending in this district by north of $7 million focused on instruction. And the board has set a really ambitious goal to get from 60, we're still not even technically at 60, to 70. So that means we still have lots of work ahead, but we're very proud of the work that we have done to move that needle. As I shared with you, that number of 57% was stationary for nearly two decades. And so in two years, we have started to creep that number forward, and we will continue to do so as we can in, in the next couple of years. You guys aren't as excited about that number as I. I promise it's a big deal.
Woo hoo!
Okay. Significant new expenditures, you'll see compensation and benefits, and then school discretionary funds. I want to be clear about something. School discretionary funds is really about, as we spoke in our work session last month, remember, our Title I money is now moved into the general fund, so it is not separate, it still tracks separately, but it's in the general fund, and so that's largely Title I money, discretionary money coming into the general fund, okay? We didn't increase school discretionary accounts by nearly $5 million. We did increase them a little bit, but it's really Title I money coming over across. I want to take the opportunity, while I'm talking about Title I, to clarify, if you have read in the budget that it looks like we reduced Title I or grant positions by 50 or 60 positions, if you read the budget narrative, it describes what we've talked about multiple times, which is, they're just not in grants anymore. They are now actually in the general fund. In fact, our total FTE across schools is up 79 FTE from last year. So roughly 50 of those are Title I positions, but also, in the autonomy that we've given schools, schools did add positions through that budget build because they chose how to use their resources. So I just wanted to make sure and clarify that. And then everything else you'll see there is what Mr. Schuler was talking about, about the IBR process. The board has seen that line item by line item. We did categorize just for brevity a little bit, but you'll see, outside of election and graduations, it was a really focused budget build on academic programs for students. That's now what we're doing. We are focusing our money on the experience of kids in schools, and so that's why you see all of those really related to that. Other funds, so these are the appropriations for all of those other funds that I talked about, that all carry their own fund balance as well. The only number here that looks dramatically different is that $198 million for capital programs. Remember, that is because they have $130 million or $125 million in a COP. If you do that math, 198 minus 120 is still more than our capital budget. That's because we're just crossing fiscal years for projects now that will spend down because we do most of the work in the summer. Questions?
Okay. Thank you so much for the comprehensive presentation, and Superintendent Goll also read that letter earlier in the superintendent's report. I want to start by thanking the DAC Budget Chair, Carl Schuler. Thank you for being here, present the work done by your committee and you acting in that bridge role from last year to the next year. Thank you for the report that you provided to the board as well, and please carry our appreciation to the rest of the committee members out there. And thank you for your report as well, Dr. Comfort, and also the work by Ms. Heronick. Appreciation goes to her for all the time that she has spent in the district. I know that Director Nelson wants to make a comment, and Director Nelson.
I have a question on, I think it's the attachment to the second agenda item. It's the beginning fund balance, authorizing use of the beginning fund balance. I don't know if we can get that pulled up. The attachment on the second agenda item, it's the portion of beginning fund balance resolution, 2025-33. And I'm, I'm just curious how preschool fund is, maybe where it calls out on our compensation, but are other categories, like food service, aren't calling that out? And if you want to get, no. You and I have been talking offline. I've been asking lots of questions. I still have another list, and so if this is one you want to get back to me later, that's fine, but I just thought I would ask now.
Yeah, I will have to get back to you why we call it out specifically separately. I'm not sure. What I will say is, so you drew a comparison. They are a little different in the sense that food service is revenue generating, so food service largely is their own independent business, right? They bring in revenue and then spend it, so technically, their compensation is their decision as well. Where preschool, even though it's, it's not revenue generating, so we kind of decide that, but why we call out non-recurring compensation specifically, I, I'm not sure, but I can find out.
Yeah, I would have thought it would be flipped, that we would have to call out the compensation for food service, because I know you've taught me that they, they provide their own pockets of money, that food service is its own little bucket.
I believe the answer on preschool is because it doesn't come to us from the same funding stream as the rest of our budget. If, well, I don't want to go back, but the chart that showed 50% from the state, then the local and the MLO, the state funds this out of a, a completely different mechanism. It's actually based upon a, a different tax that they collect. So I think we're asked to account for it separately by line item because of that reason, but we'll get a, a final answer and share.
I would have thought that would be the same for food service, because it's similar.
Yeah. We, we will absolutely find out. I guarantee you, Ms. Heronick will have a wonderful answer, that she's probably told me before.
All right.
I will get that to you.
And then if you'll go back to the presentation, I just want to call out on, nope, previous slide.
Previous.
Next slide.
Next slide.
Sorry. Further down.
Further down.
One more. Okay, I just want to call out that the mill levy override here, because I had this question, that it's stating $7,530,000. That's not the total amount of MLO dollars that we see, we get at this point with the inflation rate that we're allowed to take in the 2017 MLO. It's closer to $81.5 million. And so this, what you're seeing here is unallocated, correct me if I'm wrong here, unallocated dollars that have built up, or that we intend to spend, for example, that we know we're going to be purchasing new ELA curriculum, and so it's the non-recurring portion of those MLO dollars. And so that's what this is. It's not the total amount of MLO.
Yeah, that's correct. Thank you for that, Director Nelson. The, the remainder of our MLO budget is already appropriated to all of those accounts. So if you read through the entire budget book, which I know everybody has done, you'll see that we've already appropriated $18 million of MLO to the capital budget, because there's a PIP related to that. You'll see that we've already allocated $9 million towards compensation. So we've already appropriated that. This is just after we've spent all of the money. This is, to Director Nelson's point, the, the non-recurring amount left over. And in the future, if we want to, I mean, it's in the budget, but if we want to more clearly, higher in the budget, more visibly demonstrate where that goes, we absolutely can.
Okay. That is all I had. Thank you for all the hard work. Please pass on our thanks to the team. And Laura, thank you for serving the district for so long, and we really appreciate the time and energy you've served.
Thank you. Director Carey?
I don't really have any questions. I just want to grandstand for a moment. I'll try to be fast. When I came onto the board, I have, I saw what I called at the time the scariest graph in public education. I've referenced this probably a dozen times over the last year and a half. It's the graph that shows staffing going slightly up, while enrollment falls off a cliff. And I said at the time that this is something that we have to, you know, get better at, and we have to take a look at, and we have to fix. And Dr. Comfort and his team received some clear priorities and directives from the board when building out this budget. Our superintendent's favorite saying is, the number-one way to student achievement is access to high-quality instruction. We were clear that we want dollars spent as close to the classroom as possible. We were clear that we wanted all-new state money to go to compensation. And you're, when you presented the numbers that you were excited about, right, we're never going to jump up at the dais and cheer, but I do want to try to share a little of my excitement here. Remember that school districts in Colorado right now are facing a very difficult combination of, for many of them, declining enrollment, state funding issues in general, and for, you know, loss of ESSER funds and the like. So what we're looking at here with this budget is, again, a, what did you say, something on the order of $7 million? Right-sizing in central administration, shifting over to prioritizing instruction, and, you know, with slightly different gradations, 10% in compensation, whether that's a combination of recurring, non-recurring, steps and lanes. And I think that does not include benefits, or that does include benefits? Do you remember?
The, the 10% does not include benefits.
Okay, so then, you know, covering increased costs and benefits over on our side as well. So I would just like to say huge thanks and congratulations to Dr. Comfort and the team. I think you've done tremendous work here. I think this is a really good budget that corresponds to what the board is prioritizing, which is, spend money close to the classroom. That means instruction. 60%, I'm going to round to 60 generously, is great, and I'm excited to see us continue that work over the next few years that I'm here.
Thank you. Director Rock?
Thank you. On the presentation slides, page 2.
On the presentation slides, page two, if we could look the very bottom.
This page two or this page two?
There we go. Sorry, one back, Melissa.
One back, sorry.
Yep. At the very bottom there, total program as a percent of all general fund revenue. Can you address what's in parentheses there about transfers in from MLO then? And maybe this was what Director Nelson was speaking to earlier?
Yeah, so it's, it's similar to, it's not a perfect representation, but it is similar to this, which is if we look at the total program as a percent of all general fund revenue, and we don't take into account MLO, it's 86% because we have a lot of money in reserves. Once we take into account MLO revenue, then that amount drops, obviously, because there's an additional $70 million in MLO money.
So other revenue sources being the grants?
Yes.
Or that is not.
Yes, yes, yes. So the, yeah, there's, I mean, obviously, the general fund is the largest part of our revenue, but there are a variety of other revenues that we bring in as well.
Okay, maybe it'll make, make more sense to me by the time I get the rest of the way through the budget, but I'm going to leave that one. The other question, so a couple more pages in the significant funds, I think it's page six. There we go.
Okay.
Yeah, significant new expenditures, thank you. Can you just address for us, there's school discretionary funds in addition to the school-based or site-based budgeting implementation and the school support, can you differentiate for us what those are, or at least for me?
Yes, so the school discretionary funds are, as I mentioned, that is the moving of what was discretionary funds in Title I into the general fund. So that's the majority of that, it's not all of that. We also, because some schools are projected up in enrollment, so their discretionary accounts are higher, so that's a portion of that as well. The school-based budgeting implementation, if you remember, I requested, and it went through the IBR process, that I have a contingency, a one-time contingency for the implementation and the fall adjustment that will occur in SBB, because I'm not quite yet certain how all of those numbers will play out. And so that's that $700,000 for that. I will have to look at the specific IBR requests, we categorize school support, there's some other requests that kind of culminate into $500,000. If you look in the budget, they're all detailed specifically, but I absolutely can send what we combined into that $500,000.
Okay, thank you. And I guess the other question I have, again, not having looked completely at the budget, career and tech education programming, I appreciate that we continue to support that. So significantly, can you address at all what those particular, what that increase is addressing?
Yeah, so we still have some of our apprentice programs and some of our work-based learning programs that, as we continue to prioritize budget, haven't yet made themselves into the recurring budget. And so we continue to fund them in this way. And so, much like academics, if you remember, as an example, in fact, it's, you know, it's combined up there. We created a budget of $750,000 for our VAPA programs across the district. The agreement was the district would give half, and they would, they would find and prioritize half of that in their recurring budget. And then over time, we'll stair-step that down into where they're completely sufficient, self-sufficient. So we're in the same place with career and tech ed. Our leader, Mr. Roberson, is working to prioritize his budget and kind of figure out what will be in recurring, and as he works through that process, we continue to fund him with some one-time money.
Okay, so interesting that it's considered one-time money, then that is the plan, then, you're saying?
Yeah, that, yeah, and we continue to fund a number of initiatives with, with our nonrecurring resources as we give them time to build that into their priority list, and hopefully, as we have time in the upcoming years, to find recurring money to put into our academic programs as well.
Yeah, I want to acknowledge the significance here for everyone, that normally a line like that comes at a mid-year or end-of-year fallout money. So we're pre-planning for over half a million dollars for those programs. Nobody has been more resourceful than Dwayne in finding that change in the, in the laundry room, but we, in the same way that you heard Dr. Comfort talk about our visual and performing arts, we want to put, we're starting at nonrecurring dollars, but into the budget. It is now budgeted that we expect this much at least to go towards this, not how do we find the money? We want to be programmed the beginning of the year for what we expect to spend, not having to find that money midway through the year and hoping that we can get it. I'll never forget thespians asking me to be able to go to a national conference. Those are the types of things that should already be in a budget, not can we find money at the end of the year for kids to be able to compete nationally for their CTSO or their CTE experience.
Thank you. Are we continuing to fund the apprenticeship program within D11 as well?
We are.
Okay.
Now, what we, I don't remember, this was discussed at a recent DAC meeting. Our hope is over time, as an example, I have a apprentice in our grants program, if you haven't met him, Luke, he has a brilliant mind, I go down there and he's like, "Look what I did, I did a, I did the ACFER," and I'm like, "I don't even know what that is, man." But we're hoping that because they're showing so much value, district departments will start to, start to build in their pay into their budget. But because we want to incentivize that, again, we're still paying for that separately, with the bridge over time saying, as this becomes a priority and a non-negotiable in the system, that we will build that into our budget.
All right, thank you.
The significant, the second significant part to apprenticeships is we're now trying to spin apprenticeships outside of the district, so then we're not carrying that 50% cost of that hourly wage that we pay. And so even in the state of the district conversation this morning, one of the asks to key influencers in our community is, can you open your doors for paid apprenticeships? We will work with the state to get those apprenticeships built, we don't want to ask our local economy to have to carry that load of how do you build in, what's approved and what's not approved? That's on us to be able to do, but then when we get that paid apprenticeship with Dr. Mel Packham's engineering consultancy, then that company is helping to cover that cost. We believe so much in apprenticeships that we ate that cost initially to make sure that we could control and design the programs to know that they could work and land well outside of the district. But the goal is not only for our students to work inside district positions, it's for them to be embedded in the local economy for the 2,000 hours that makes the full apprenticeship.
Okay, thank you. I'll, I'll join my colleagues in saying, please give Laura our best, and I know that she's probably irreplaceable after her experience here. I hope you have hired someone with great education service accounting, because that's what's going to be desperately needed.
We have hired, I would actually love for the board to meet him, we have hired a great replacement for Laura, he and Laura have been spending significant amounts of time together to help with that transition, because it's a tough transition. But we're really excited, we, we think that he's going to continue to help move our system forward.
Great, thank you.
Director Nelson, you have something to add?
I wanted to follow up on Director Ott's question and help explain the school discretionary funds, that is more about a bookkeeping aspect, it's not necessarily a change in the amount of funding, but that the schools previously were saddled with a lot of paperwork with their Title I accounting, and we have learned from other school districts that they do it a little bit differently, and so we're shifting over to mimic how other school districts allocate their Title I dollars. And so we're just having to show that in the books here, is that all correct?
That is correct, this is a transition year for us, I appreciate the comment, Director Nelson. We are very excited about this initiative, because we want schools focused on the implementation and effectiveness of their Title I initiatives, not on the bookkeeping. They still have some bookkeeping, but like, the burden of bookkeeping for, for, if you were, if you're a Title I school, I think Mr. Smith is here, he can attest to this, especially at Mitchell where it's a high school and they get a large budget, I mean, it's, he probably, his team probably spends more time on that than they do their general fund. And so what, what Mr. Smith should be focused on is the initiatives and their effectiveness, and so this move is going to, is going to free up the time at schools. We will carry a lot of that burden centrally, we'll free up time in schools to focus on what matters most.
And then can you just speak to, is it true that the graduation costs, the $90,000, and then the compensation and benefits are truly the recurring dollars?
That is correct.
On this list? So everything else here is the nonrecurring, and I want to footstomp what people have been saying, this is very intentional and strategic budget building. We are shifting the district away from, oh, we have this money left over that we're finding in the middle of the year, what can we do with it now, and kind of putting out a call to staff, what do you want this, this money to be spent on? And instead, saying, we expect you to think through your school year and where you need to spend your resources. And so it is very exciting work, and I am with you, that that almost 60% is headed in the right direction, and we're going to keep going, because we are dedicated to aligning our resources to the mission of District 11, which is educating children. And so thank you again for all that hard work, to you and superintendent.
Thank you. I see Director Jorgensen sign this up, Director Jorgensen.
Yes, for, for years, I don't know, I couldn't find it in the budget here, so I'm asking this question. For years, we've been paying a portion of the union president's salary. With the master agreement ending on June 30th, does this budget reflect that, the ending of that supplementation for the mass, uh, union's president's salary?
Do you want to answer it, Dr. Comfort?
I'm happy to. Thank you for the question, Director Jorgensen. This budget has the continuation of the district's contribution to that, and so if that were to be removed, that would be an adjustment between this week and next week.
Oh, I'm glad I asked that, yeah, I would assume that if the master agreement was ending, that that continuation would have naturally ended as well. So yes, I would ask that we no longer fund that position, as we no longer have a binding agreement with them as of July 1st.
Okay. Thank you, Director Jorgensen. Do you have any other questions at this time?
No, my other questions were asked by other directors, so thank you.
Okay, so Director Jorgensen had a proposal in place, is that something that the rest of the board is aligned with? By show of hands, oh, Director, Director Rahn.
Thank you, I appreciate the conversation on the topic. So that is being continued, there was presumably a reason for that, whether it's easing the, the transition, or having this significant input of someone who is working with teachers who organized for a purpose. Can you maybe elaborate that, on that for us?
I would say our budget continued the current existence and support. We have not had conversations with the board about that, so this would be the, the first, and I would absolutely defer to the board on, on that direction. Obviously, the board has line item budget authority, and so any existing position anywhere in the budget, the board has the ability to remove or add.
Okay, so from what I understand, what he's saying is, currently, the budget reflects the continuing practice from past years, but the board does have the authority by action. Does that answer your question, Director?
He was very clear.
Okay. Director Bankus.
I understand there's conversation going on about others who are leading our other employee groups, and so I would like to defer any decision until that conversation about how we're compensating the leaders of other employee groups. Sorry, my voice is just not right. Until we get more conversation around how we're going to be equitable across all employee groups.
Okay. If I heard you right, you talked about the leadership positions of all employee groups, including ESP and ExePRO, and to have some clarity on that before we venture into that. Okay. Director Nelson.
Yeah, I think that there is some follow-up conversation needed, we've spent a lot of time discussing the handbook, the employee handbook, but we have not, as a board, come back together to discuss things such as salary of the CSCA president, or dues deductions, or, you know, informing staff that the rules are changing, that use of District 11 emails and facilities by union business is, is no longer going to continue per what was in the contract, that that is ending. So I think there is a need for some follow-up conversation on what operations should look like going forward, and I get it's a little foggy because some of this is operational, but because of it being a board contract in the past that dictated some of this, I do think it's important for the board to sort of give operations guidance. And so I don't know, timing-wise, I mean, we're supposed to vote on this budget next week, if we can have an executive session, or if this is, you know, a work session topic prior to us voting on this budget, because yes, we have another employee group that is an actual D11 position, they are support, it is a D11 supporting staff position, and so does that move over into HR? Or do we expect HR to pick up that role, our current HR employees, and then that individual move back to where he was previously working in the district? And I have a lot of respect for the individuals that we're speaking about here, and I realize this could be a very personal issue, and I want to touch on it with sensitivity, but we also need to recognize that with the contract ending, things are, are going to change. And so I, I just would like for us to have that conversation.
Thank you, thank you for that request. What, if it is the board's will on this, I can reach out to legal counsel and have legal counsel come and talk about the implications of the contract and moving away from the contract, and what is it that the board can go about doing this in response to Director Jorgensen's question out there, and that could be scheduled next week before the board meeting. We do have executive session already in place next week for other adjunct items, and this could be added as legal advice that's coming up there. And in the meantime, one of the questions that was asked, I think it was by Director Bankus, was about what do we do about other employee group representation, and maybe that is a conversation that the district can bring as a recommendation to the board as well. Okay. Director Carey.
I'll also mention that I see Jason raising his hand again. I think just to focus the legal question, Dr. Comfort will probably know better than I, but there's, there's state statute that basically mandates in some fashion that the way you treat your employee groups has to be similar, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I think that's probably where the legal question comes up, where, okay, if we have a certain, what was the phrasing that you used, district-specific position for one employee group, do we, is, do we want to transition it for other employee groups? I don't know off the top of my head what the specifics are, but that seems like probably the thing we would need to tackle.
Yeah, and we will get clarity, I don't want to speak right now, let's, let legal answer that question, because even right now, we seem to be doing different things with the different employee groups, because ExePRO is being handled differently than ESP and CSCA. So let legal come and provide that clarity in that regard. Director Jorgensen.
Yeah, just to add, I don't know, I think Director Nelson mentioned it, but if we haven't, the dues deduction and all of that, making sure that that's all ending with the master agreement, be a great conversation to make sure that we're doing.
Okay, thank you. So we will discuss this in executive session, and the district will come prepared to provide some recommendations to the board, and all these budget.
You want to take a thumbs to do that?
Yeah. Yeah, is the board okay with executive session on the adjunct item? By show of thumbs, okay. I've got four thumbs at least I can see, and I can see Jason's too. And then all these budget, budget, budget items will come as an action item next week in the regular board meeting, and the board will have an opportunity to adopt the budget with revisions made, if necessary, to the budget going forward. Superintendent, I don't see any other discussion from the board on the budget at this time. Superintendent Gall, you have some closing thoughts?
Yeah, I just wanted to publicly acknowledge the work that Dr. Comfort has brought to pair here. It's just about a year ago that we introduced a chief resource officer, Brandon is now our deputy superintendent, but has really brought together this idea of realizing the value of every dollar and its intentionality for students. I appreciate the board echoing those pieces. I just want to remind, as I said in the opening piece, as I read the letter, that this is the way the district is going. We cannot be in positions where we have tens of millions of dollars unaccounted for or unbudgeted at mid-year. We have to program ourselves to change the outcomes for children. It will not happen without leaders like Dr. Comfort and his ability. I remind folks, this is a, a former school leader who is now running the entirety of your budgeting process, and not just how we spend our money, but how we get our money, and then how we hire our people with those. and then how we hire our people with those money. So with great appreciation for the work that Dr. Comfort has provided in this seminal budget, I also offer him my chair for the rest of this evening. I am going to attend to my, uh, brand-new second lieutenant, uh, the United States Air Force Academy Class of 2025, who I just pinned on about two hours ago, and go attend to those family needs. And so with that transition, if Dr. Comfort can take the seat.
Well, thank you, and, uh, best wishes to you and your niece on the graduation, and enjoy the Air Force Academy graduation. Hopefully you don't get too wet tomorrow with the rains that are expected.
Better birds will dry us off.
Well, Dr. Comfort, uh, you are taking the official chair of authority out there. Hopefully you've come prepared, and you're not going to throw any curveballs at me, which you were talking about behind there. So, um, um, I think we are done with this discussion. Again, thank you for all the, um, work that has gone behind the scenes, and also thank you to the board, uh, Tricia Nelson as well, uh, with the development of this budget. And the focus has been, I was going to ask you one question. In your role, uh, you know, the Chief Finance Officer and the, um, Chief Resource Officer and also the Deputy Superintendent, you probably have contacts with other school district, uh, chief financial officers. What are you hearing in those circles as far as compensation goes in other surrounding school districts or school districts in, uh, Colorado for this year?
Yeah, I appreciate the question. I, I don't think I've heard of a school district offering the, the total comprehensive compensation package that we're offering.
Yeah.
And why that is, I'm not certain, but, uh, I do think that the board, at the board's direction earlier in the year, I do want to, I do want to foot-stomp that. The board gave that direction back in November, well before good budget, bad budget, any of those things. Uh, and so, um, I haven't heard of a school district who is, is able to, to match what we're offering.
Great, which is similar to what I've been hearing in my circles as well. So this compensation package that is being proposed at this time in the, uh, budget that will be adopted by the board next week, um, uh, it is a robust compensation package. It puts the money, uh, right in the middle, directing it to the students in the classrooms and taking care of our teachers and staff. So thank you for all the work that, that was done in this regard. Uh, the next item on the, uh, agenda today is the Mitchell High School Innovation Plan. So Superintendent Gall, um, administration presented, uh, Superintendent Gall and his team presented the Mitchell High School Innovation Plan to the board during the April 16th special meeting, and then this was also presented to the, um, State Board, uh, NCD earlier this month. Um, uh, Dr. Comfort, uh, do you have any additional information to the board at this time? I see, let's call back up there as well.
Uh, I would just add, if you haven't watched the State Board presentation, uh, I would definitely encourage you to do so. Um, they were definitely fanning over the plan and, uh, the presentation of Superintendent Gall and, and Mr. Smith. Uh, and so it was a, it was like a resounding, I don't know how many board members there are, seven oh, nine oh?
Nine, nine.
Uh, and so I think they were really excited about the plan, uh, and, and a part of the plan is the continuation of the innovation plan at Mitchell High School. And so I'll turn it over to Area Superintendent Kalback.
That's correct. Thank you, and good afternoon, board members and Deputy Superintendent Comfort. Sorry, I had to slow myself down and think about what I wanted to say there. Um, thank you for this opportunity to bring Mitchell's Innovation Plan back in front of you. I was pleased to see that a few weeks ago, several of you were able to make it up to Denver to see the presentation of the State Board as well. As you know, the State Board unanimously voted nine zero, uh, to accept Mitchell's plan, which really is a two-pronged plan. The first is partial academic management, um, which we are, are well in the development process for. And the second was to maintain an innovation plan. Innovation plans by law are required to come back to you every three years for a review. We have made no changes to Mitchell's Innovation Plan from the initial innovation. And so a, uh, yes vote on this eventually would simply mean that the local board is aware of and in support of the Innovation Plan that the State Board has also approved. And of course, we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Board, any questions on this topic? Director Ott.
Thank you. So I guess I was a little dismayed that the Innovation Plan doesn't have any updates. Are you considering the Pathway Plan, the update? Is, I mean, is that how we're to consider this?
I think the biggest update is the addition of the external academic man, partial academic manager, um, with the Innovation Plan being part of that Pathway Plan. It is referenced in the Pathway Plan, linked in the Pathway Plan. Um, you'll see that hung in your documents as well.
Yes, I, I did see them, but since we also had about 500 other pages, I didn't get to everything as in the detail I'd hoped to normally. So I, the, I get, I guess what I'd like to have seen would have been more of it, an update to the Innovation Plan itself, to, so we know what is proving effective, what hasn't been, what is being dropped, like the University of Chicago is, we don't have an agreement with them anymore.
We do not.
So maybe a, an update for us, um, and some of the community engagement, are the calls home happening, the positive calls home, the voluntary visits, et cetera, as I glanced through that material. Um, so Mr. Smith is getting up, maybe he'd like to address that.
I will have, turn this over to him in just a moment, but I think that the updates that you were looking for in terms of how a plan is being implemented would be better captured in the progress monitoring that we do several times a year with CDE. Um, those are publicly available documents, and we'd be happy to provide those as well. They may get to that level of depth that you're looking for. The other thing that I would say is, to this point, we've really not utilized a number of the innovations contained within the Innovation Plan, and so it may have been premature to make significant changes to those innovations at this point or to those waivers. George, did you want to add on?
Yeah, the only thing I would, I would echo everything that, um, Area Superintendent Kalback said. First of all, thank you for, um, hearing us tonight and, and being here, and Dr. Comfort, thank you for sitting in for Superintendent Gall. Uh, but what I would say is that what we heard from Andy Swanson, our liaison at the state, is that the Innovation Plan does not have to have a, uh, revo at the site level per se unless the waivers were changed. We are not looking to change the waivers as Area Super, uh, Kalback stated. Um, the waivers, we know that we can exercise at a greater level moving forward, but I think to your point, uh, Director Ott, is that we can, at the site level, make updates to the plan and get rid of some of the old language. We can do that at the site level.
Okay. I think that, um, whether or not they agree with me, I can certainly go find those updates from the CDE or that you're giving to the CDE online, but it might be something really nice to have a link, um, in the Mars report that happens once a month, so that we could be aware of that at least once, so we know what we're looking for.
We're happy to provide that.
Thank you. Director Nelson.
Could you share a little bit about the root cause? I tried to find it in that deck that's a thousand pages long, and I am not finding that information. So could you just speak to it a little bit of what we-
Root cause per-
Like of what the issues are? I assume it's titled Root Cause Analysis. It's number six on the table of contents, and when I go to look for it, I am not seeing it, like, so if you could just speak to what you believe the root cause is for some of the, uh, concerns we have at Mitchell are, because if we know what the causes are, then we can address them.
Yeah, I mean, the root, the root causes are the quality of instruction in the classroom every day, and I think based upon what we, um, presented to the State Board for the nine zero unanimous vote is bringing, um, higher quality instruction to the center of, of the educational process, which is putting, putting that instruction right in front of the students every day. Um, we were just listening about the budget, right? And putting dollars closest to the students. Um, and what I am looking at here in terms of root causes is, um, it, it directly reflects on one of the surveys that we surveyed our community when we presented the Pathway Plan to the state. And the top three items are educational program, hiring and compensation, and then talent development and evaluation of staff. And so once we get, there's other waivers in the Innovation Plan that address, um, different areas, but those are the three, what I would say, root causes about why, um, we are still struggling with performance at Mitchell High School. And we get that right, which is where dollars are being placed, that's where training is getting placed, um, and, and where execution and planning are getting placed. You'll, you're going to see those three areas, uh, addressed very quickly.
I remember when you were here previously that you mentioned the average grade level of students are coming into Mitchell are, was it fifth grade?
Yeah, fifth and sixth grade levels for both evidence-based reading and writing and mathematics.
Yeah, that, that's such a challenge when they're coming in so far behind, and so just, uh, recognizing we want quality education in the classroom, but then also meeting the students where they're at and, and being able to bring them up to that level. So let us know how we can support you, and thank you for the work you guys are continuing to do there.
Yeah, if I can just add, Director Nelson, and you, you mentioned exactly what I was going to mention, um, uh, Mitchell teachers are, are working their hearts out. Uh, it's not like kids are showing up on grade level-
Right.
And then they're losing years in, in a year at Mitchell. The work is different, um, and yes, we are differentiating our resources to some degree. The question is, is it enough? Well, we were happy to share data that our vacancy rate is lower at Mitchell. Um, but are we getting everything, are students getting everything they need at that school? I think the data would say that they're not. Uh, and so, um, it's so interesting, because typically in, in improvement planning, the root cause really matters, uh, and it still matters, but like, we, we got to go bigger. Uh, and I think that's what, that's why the State Board loved this plan, is because we're seeing progress with the Innovation Plan, maybe not bold enough. Um, but then with the addition of a, an expert group coming in saying, we got to, regardless of how they're coming in, because that's a long-term strategy that, that we need to address. Uh, right now, we need to improve teaching, um, and we know that teachers improve teaching best when we get people in there helping them. And that's what Mitchell teachers deserve. Uh, and so I think that's why the State Board and, and the district as well is so excited about the plan for next year.
Thank you. And as we think about that, um, vertical, uh, vertical alignment as well, the partner that we'll be using at Mitchell is the same one that we use at Galileo, the same one that we use at Adams. And so as students, um, matriculate through the system, they'll experience many of the same instructional techniques from K all the way through 12, and it's paying off in other schools. And so we hope to get the same results at Mitchell as well.
Yeah, I remember we saw gains at Audubon using this, um, this contract work, so.
And I just want to add on one thing too, because oftentimes when we say that high-quality instruction is going to be the, the focal point to address those root causes, it, it kind of goes to Dr. Comfort's point that, uh, maybe there's a inference that staff are not working hard. That's absolutely not the case. Staff are working hard. What we are doing is we're putting supports around the staff. And what, uh, Superintendent Gall said after the unanimous vote at the state hearing was, please go back and tell the Marauders Nation, your staff, that we are investing back into the professional development of our educators, which, um, is highly necessary in public education across the country.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, appreciate your leadership at Mitchell High School and what you guys are doing. This is not anything new that I'm going to say, um, uh, we've been in front of the State Board several times, and as Superintendent Gall probably said in front of the State Board, the options that we have in front of us are dwindling going forth. Next time we go in front of the State Board, uh, if this is not the work, and I'm optimistic that the plan that we have in place, so there is a sense of urgency at this point in time that we turn this around, not only for Mitchell, uh, community, but for District 11 as well. Uh, and I see the challenges that are in place when you look at the schools that are on the priority improvement of the state watch list. Adams feeds into Galileo, and Galileo feeds into, uh, Mitchell, and Swigert has some of the same issues out there. So you are getting some challenges, but we still have to, we are, as a school board, uh, before the end of the school year, going to talk about middle school accountability and emphasizing that going into the next school year. So hopefully that will ease up, uh, some of the problems that you are facing as well. Thank you again. Appreciate your work that you are doing as well, and we, uh, look forward to visiting your school more often, uh, ne- next year, and, uh, wish you the best, and please carry our gratitude to your staff as well. Thank you. So moving on to the next item on the agenda, the proposed board meeting dates, uh, for fiscal year '25, '26. So the proposed board meeting dates for, uh, this school year, for the next upcoming school year was uploaded into board docs, uh, and it's being pulled up out there. The proposed schedule for next year remains consistent with the format of the board, followed this year, with the exception of intentionally building in dates for board retreats. Uh, this is as per, as per the board's request. So, uh, Chief Atmar is up here too, but Directors, do you have any questions, comments at this point in time on this, uh, document that is in front of you? Okay, seeing none, this item will come up as an action agenda item. Uh, can the, yeah, can this be moved to consent? Is the board comfortable moving this to consent? Okay, so this item will move to consent next time. Um, the next one is, uh, the next agenda item is intend to participate in the 2025 coordinated election and appointment of the designated election official. This resolution is required by state statute to confirm the district participation in the 2025, uh, coordinated school board elections. The resolution also designates Board of Education Specialist, uh, Ms. Melissa Olson as the schools, as the school designated election official. Um, any other information from you, Dr. Comfort, on this item? No? Okay, great. Uh, board, any discussion on this item? This is mandated and required. Director Ott.
Thank you. I have all face in our appointee, but I just want to make sure, uh, will there be backup as well? You have support.
I'm the backup.
You're the backup, okay. Then I think we're, I think we're good. Thank you for the information.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is the board, um, okay with moving this to consent next week? Okay. The next item on the, uh, agenda is the DAC Chair and Vice Chair. And, uh, in order for the DAC to continue operation optimally prior to the start of fiscal year '25, '26, the board must review and approve this information annually in the spring. This is, at this time, the board is just approving the DAC Chair and the Vice Chair positions. Um, the DAC, uh, internally, uh, at the last DAC meeting, uh, discussed this topic, and, uh, Ms. Marion Clausen, who's the current Chair, and Spring Byington, uh, if I said her name right, as Vice Chair, um, she is, uh, new on the DAC, and she is being, both those names, Marion Clausen as the DAC Chair and Spring Byington as the Vice Chair. Other recommendations coming in front of the board at this time. Ms. Clausen, do you have anything to add to this? Okay, thank you. That was a unanimous vote from the DAC to recommend those two names in front of the board. Uh, board, any discussions on this topic at this time? Director Ott.
I just want to say thank you to Marion and Spring for your service, um, and willingness to serve, at least, because it's incredibly important, um, and of course legally required that we have the DAC. So thank you for, um, stepping up again in your case, Marion.
Director Nelson.
I've sent a couple of emails requesting that the board have a conversation about membership, and I haven't gotten a response back that that could be added to an agenda. So can we get that conversation to happen?
Well, uh, this is the first time it's coming in a public board meeting requesting that, so, um-
I, I-
Unless I get a consensus from the board to discuss this, that's why. I mean, if it's coming from one board member as a private email, then I cannot add that as an agenda item. But we are going to discuss that later today during the committee composition conversation as far as the, uh, membership for next year and the, uh, uh, schedule of committee meetings for next year.
Okay, I understand that you've emailed other board members, and you just never replied to me about, um, my request, so next time-
Because that email that you directed was not directed towards me. The email that I received from a board member was directed towards me. I just wanted to follow the Cora request and public, you know, sunshine laws. It was directed to the whole board. The email, if it is specifically directed to me as a one-on-one board member, I'm happy to respond back.
Okay, you're able to reply back to me as the president, letting me know, hey, if you would like to bring this as an agenda item, do it this way, not this way.
Okay, thank you. Director Bankus, you had, you- Director Bankus, you had, you.
Did you correctly, we're going to talk about membership on that DAC committee?
If the board, yes, if the board has feedback on what that membership is going to look like.
I'll wait.
Okay, and again to the board, if you have one-on-one conversation, I want to respect the sunshine laws that are there. I'm always happy to address that if you have any concerns that you want to bring directly to me in a phone conversation or in an email that is directed at me. When it's directed at the whole board, I just want to ensure that I'm not violating any of the sunshine laws by replying back to the whole board on that topic. Now, this item, the DAC chair and the vice chair, can the board move it to consent next week? Okay, thank you. Moving on to, there are a few policy items that is in front of the board as non-action item, and policy GCKAA, several policies out there, and I will defer to Dr. Comfort first to you and through you to Dr. X. Dr. X.
Good evening, President Malpakum, Dr. Comfort, and members of the board. This evening, we have some policies presented that are from the G series that we would ask for your vote for adoption, as these are policies that are required. The first group that is presented for item number 10, teacher displacement, instructional staff reduction in force, evaluation of licensed personnel and support staff positions. These are all policies that are required by law, and we did a couple of things over the last couple of months with talent management to make sure that these practices were in line with their current practices when it came to these subjects. But one policy in here, GDA, is, we're just asking that that's being revised to GDE and GDF to meet coding standards.
Okay. Any questions from the board on this? So, these are new policies?
These are new policies, yes.
Okay. Any questions from the board on this topic? Okay, seeing none. Director Nelson.
Sorry, there's several policies, and I just remembered it's this agenda item. Some of these policies reference at the end, regulation, like it calls out, I'm trying to find the wording. Anyways, I just wanted to understand what the process will be for, not that we approve regulations, but that we can ensure regulation aligns to policy and when those will be developed.
Yeah, we would, because we're asking that these policies be adopted with a July 1st date because of timelines, we would bring those regulations as we develop those specific steps, we would bring those back to the fall so that the board could see how those align.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. For something like, okay, hopefully I've got this right, GDE, GDF, so that is not a new policy according to this, according to the policy right up.
Yeah, GDA is the current policy, I'm just asking that it be recoded.
Oh, okay, that's all we're asking?
For that one, correct.
You said GDA?
GDA.
Okay, and I'm, I guess, GDA isn't in here, unless, it's, yes, okay, former GDA, sorry, seeing the specifics now. I don't, for this one, we're supposed to approve a statement of job requirements as recommended by the superintendent. I don't feel like we ever do anything like that. Is that, but here we are, saying that we do it. Is that something we should be seeing once in a while?
I don't know that that level necessarily goes to you for a vote. I think that rests with talent management, but the overall descriptions of those positions does rest publicly with the district.
Okay, it might be something I bring up later to the board then, since it does say and approve a statement of job requirements as recommended by the superintendent. And in general, when, I know there is a lot of restructuring going on, and those positions never come before the board for our awareness until things are done. So, that just seems like a question in general that, of us being informed and being responsive to items like this, so, thank you.
Thank you. All these items will move to action next week. Thank you. You got to stay for the next agenda item as well, which is policy GBDA, GBDBHA, and you have one more policy out there. Dr. X.
Yeah, thank you, President Malpakum. GBDA, GBDB, HA, and HH are being presented tonight for the board to consider for repeal so that they could align with previous board action. These policies speak to employee groups in negotiation.
Okay, and since the board moved away from that process at this point in time, so it calls for a repeal of some of these policies. Director.
Thank you. I wondered if we could have an, just affirmation that all of the topics that are relevant to the handbook are covered in the handbook here. All right, I'm getting a nod from Ms. Atmer, so that works for me.
And the last item speaks to that more. So, the reason we need to put those policies in place is because the new employee handbook refers to board policy several times throughout. Those are statutorily required, but that employee handbook will refer back to policy, which is why we need to codify those into your policies.
But these are specifically, this next section is for repeal.
Exactly, these will all come out because they reference processes that you've already taken action on that will no longer exist or have a need for after July 1.
Okay, but the topics, I guess, I was looking at GBDA, which was about instructional something, I'll have to go find it, because of course, there are so many things here. Instructional staff conferences, training, and workshops, and haven't memorized that employee handbook yet, so I wanted to make sure, like, items like this, which are not specifically negotiating, et cetera, do we have coverage for transportation requests for trainings and such things like that?
Yeah, and I can get you the page references in the employee handbook if that's helpful.
All right, I can probably go back, and I was hoping you just had the yes or no answer, and I can probably go back and find those if need be. All right, thank you.
Okay, seeing no further questions, all these items will come as an action for repeal of these policies next week. The next item on the agenda is, again, policy items, and I'm going to turn it over to you, Dr. X.
Thank you, President Malpakum. Part of the board's vote in the alignment of our policy manual does require some significant revision to existing policies, specifically cross-references to, for example, employee handbooks in the CSEA master agreement, asking that this evening, the board consider giving a charge to the superintendent and his designee to go in and clean up the policy manual, removing those references to employee handbooks, meet and confer CSEA master agreement, so that we do not have to present each and every policy as a simple revision at the dais.
Thank you. Ms. Atmer and I had this conversation, or touched on it at least. I am curious, not that we want to see every single policy back up here for approval, given that will be a significant number of policies, but how would we be informed of the changes you have created?
So, we have, we're going to create a document that will review each and every policy. We'll provide the content that those items are mentioned, and then the action that was taken. And if there was a change to that document, we would, of course, put what the new language represent, or if a large section, sentence, for example, would be removed, we would make note of that there. If it was just a legal, sorry, a cross-reference to a document, we would have that recommended there. So, after that cleanup is done, and we're prepared to make those revisions go live on July 1, we would present that document as well to the board so they would know all of the action that was taken to the whole manual.
So, basically, by July 1, you will have a link for us or a document itself for our reference.
Correct, we're already through Series A, B, and C, and taking a look at what needs to be.
Good progress, all right, thank you.
And that could possibly come as a monthly MARS report to the board. Thank you. Again, this will come as an action item next week. This item will turn us, return us an action item next week. Okay, we are at the end of non-action items, future agenda items for consideration at this time. I don't see any, so we have two board meetings left for this calendar year, so Wednesday, June 4, 2025, that will be next week. It'll be a regular board meeting with executive session. There are several items for that executive session, including another student expulsion appeal, and there is a workman's comp claim discussion, and now we have legal counsel coming and talking about the topic that we discussed earlier today with employee group, employee group representation. Tomorrow, during the agenda meeting, we will figure out how much time is necessary. Usually, we start the executive session at 4:00 p.m. If it is necessary, we may have to start that at 3:30. If that needs to happen, I just need to know if the board is comfortable starting that executive session at 3:30 on that day by a show of thumbs. Okay, if necessary. And you will be informed about it by Friday if it is necessary to have that earlier executive session. That will give us a full two hours for executive session before the 5:30 regular meeting that evening on June 4. That will be the last regular board meeting for this academic year, Wednesday, June 11 would be a work session, and we may need a special meeting that day to wrap up some of the board work, approving some of the policies, and there could be a couple of items that may come at a special meeting that evening. I will have a better idea after the agenda setting meeting tomorrow. Okay. Yep. Director Nelson.
As you just spoke about legal counsel in that executive session, could we request Suzanne Tejari to also be present as she helped guide us through this process up to date?
Yeah, we can certainly reach out to her and check on our availability to attend, either in person or remote.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, if, okay, Director.
Thank you, just because we have D1 on the agenda here, I appreciate that that is included, the request for new agenda items from board discussion and tasks, as it has been left off in our special meetings, and that's understandable since it's a special meeting, but it does, I think, choke back some of the opportunities for us as board members to bring forward concerns or topics. And I would be interested in supporting Director Nelson's conversation about membership and just how we can address any concerns, whether that is executive session or under legal advice, and maybe it's, I'll just leave it at that, thank you.
Yeah, we will discuss that at the work session. Work session is also an opportunity for board members at the very end of the work session. Other items, when they come up, they can make a request for future agenda items. All I'm looking for is for thumbs up at that point in time.
All right, thank you.
And we will discuss that and what the future steps are regarding that. Director Nelson.
It is a sensitive nature, as I referenced in my emails, that maybe an executive session would be more appropriate place to have the conversation. Like, if it were a staff member, it would be a personnel matter, and that's where we would be having the conversation. So, I'm not sure if the work session is appropriate. Maybe we can get to a resolution without disrespecting the individual, and so that's just my concern.
Yeah, based on the emails that came through, the couple of emails from you and the subsequent email I received from one other board member directly to me, I did talk to legal counsel to get their feedback on it. If the board wants to, since the board adopted the DAC membership in a public board meeting, removal of a DAC member would also require that process to go through a public meeting to remove the DAC member. As far as having an executive session conversation on that topic, legal counsel, the initial feedback I got from legal counsel is it wouldn't fit any of those criterias for which you can call an executive session, because it's not a personal staff matter. Director Nelson.
Just that, with emailing back in January, it maybe at that time made sense for removal, but at this time, with coming into summer, I don't think it makes sense to do an active removal of this current membership, but more it'd be a conversation about next year and what the membership would look like and this person's presence for next year.
Yeah, essentially, what the board can have a discussion during the work session is not only what the DAC and the committee's schedule is going to look like for next year, but also the expectations for the DAC membership for next year. Is there a quota contact that the board would like to see the district come with a proposal for the expectations for membership to those DAC committees, and even if it is necessary that people that are recommended to serve on those committees sign some type of an agreement that this is the quota contact that we need to follow. That's a discussion that the board can have and direct the district to come up with a recommendation to the board, which the board can look at in August, and that requirements have to be satisfied by the committee membership going forward.
And we can talk about this at the work session, but also just wanting to notify the individual now, and also our DAC chairs, so that they are aware that they will have a gap to fill potentially if the board decides to take action on making a suggestion that this individual not, that they have lost the privilege to serve on our committees. And so, if that is the case, they will need time to find someone over the summer.
Yep, I think the, hopefully, the discussion that the board is going to have and the recommendation as far as the quota contact that is going to come from the district, that would eliminate some of those people that haven't lived up to those requirements, and the recommendation for the DAC membership that will come next year will not include those members that have violated that code of agreement this year. Okay? Okay, seeing no further business, if there are no objections, this meeting will adjourn officially, this meeting is adjourned at 5:52 p.m. Thank you.